Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Westminster Select Board for Wednesday, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one at six thirty P M. Adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
Do you want me to remove the executive session now or move to move it now? Or shall we wait until actually just comes up that we'll be tabling that?
It's up to you, Kevin.
At this point, I'd like to adjust the agenda just to remove the executive session under Article Six, Section C for tonight's, tonight's meeting that will not be taking place, that will not be taking place this evening. Okay?
Yep.
No further adjustments to the agenda? Moving right along, acceptance of the minutes, March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
I move we accept the minutes of March twenty-fourth as printed.
I'll second it.
Then move to accept the minutes of March twenty-fourth as seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are adopted. Communication and public comments. Anything? Going once, going twice? Okay, seeing none, moving on to unfinished business. Town meeting articles.
This was tabled from about a month and change ago. It'd be nice to be able to put a speaker to each one of the articles so that you can get information as you need. So that's why it's there. If it's your pleasure, I would love to get names to add to these.
Are we all set, folks, to tackle that real quick? Anyone have an objection, objection not to do that tonight?
Well, let's do it.
Okay. Russell, why don't you walk us through them and we'll see who wants to do what?
So David Major will do Articles One and Two, so Article Three is our budget.
Kevin did a good job.
What's that?
I said Kevin did it last year, he did a good job, why not do it again?
I'm happy to do it.
Great.
Article Four is the appropriation for the Town Highway Equipment Reserve Fund.
Why don't we have Jason do it, he's new, and he knows something about the highway.
Sure. Great.
Article Five is the Bridge Rehab Reserve Fund.
I can do that, I think I did it last year.
Done it for the last few years, yeah, good at it.
Yeah, it's a tough one, I'll tell you. Yeah.
Article Six. Capital Improvement Fund.
Nobody's jumping up to take that one?
It should be you or Craig or Toby.
I don't mind doing it, this is, this is to add money to the, the town hall renovations, right?
That's correct.
Okay, you'll have some more information for me about that.
That's why we're doing it tonight, so I can get the information if you want it. Article Seven.
I'll do that.
Oh, you can if you want Craig, but.
No, actually, you're right, that Sue should do it since it's all part of the same one.
Yeah.
Was Sheldon gonna do some of these too, I thought, because he worked on this budget? Or is he just gonna be there?
He just has to be there for the budget.
Okay.
Article Eight.
So you're doing Seven, Susan?
Yeah, I'm gonna do Five and Seven because they're the big ones.
So Article Eight, Westminster Gazette.
I can do them.
Who was that?
Kevin.
I'm assuming there'll be people to speak on these articles.
As always, yep, yep, we'll have the, the people there if, if they so choose. Article Nine, Visiting Nurses and Hospice.
I can do that one since I haven't done it.
Is that Craig?
Yeah. I can do it.
Article Ten, SEFCO.
There's one Sheldon should do.
I'll do it.
Oh, yeah, or, yeah, that's fine.
Article Eleven, Senior Solutions.
I can do that, I deal with them.
Article Twelve, Westminster Institute and Butterfield Library.
I'll do that.
I can do, okay, Sue can do that, that's fine.
Article Thirteen, Historical Society.
I'll do that. That's okay.
Who is doing it?
Jason can do it.
Jason wanted to do it.
Jason. Fourteen, Greater Falls Connection.
I can do it if you want.
Craig? Article Fifteen, Sevins.
That's the one.
I'll do that one.
You're gonna do fourteen and fifteen, Craig?
Yeah.
It's just a matter of reading the, the articles, it's not like you have to be the speaker for them necessarily.
Article Sixteen, the West West Library with the Catamount Library Network.
I can do that, oh Toby, you wanna do that, you're West West, okay.
Toby?
Yeah.
Seventeen, the School District.
I can do that, I guess.
I was gonna say, shouldn't that be Kevin, that should be Kevin since he's the chair.
Okay, thank you.
That was easy.
Good, thank you. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Select Board Appointment, Interim School Board Update.
Most of you have been getting the emails, but Susan, Kevin, and I don't know if Craig was in it or not, but.
Yeah, I got it.
You did, okay, so the three of you should fill the other two in on what's been happening.
Good, so.
Well, this is as far, hmm, let's see. How do I explain this, so the interim school board has been, with the help of Larry Slayson, has been preparing a presentation for the State Board of Education on April twenty-first. And I, and I volunteered to be at the meeting, and I think Kevin also just to speak for the town.
Yeah.
And as far as the details of the, the school board's plan for what to do with this new school district, if that happens, I have not participated in that, I feel that's up to them, I think, as far as I'm concerned, we should, the select representatives should be there just to say, yes, this is the way our town voted.
Twice.
Twice, yes. Was that your feeling, Kevin?
Yes, exactly, and there was a follow-up today, everyone from, on the letter that specifically alluded to David Major, if you had guys had read that, David Major, the Westminster Town Moderator and former Westminster Town School Board Chair, will be making the presentation for consideration of Westminster's request to withdraw, since David was in the middle of the hunt, and obviously can articulate the fine points of what went on, he's probably the best person to make this plan clear, and, and that's where we stand at the moment. I believe that's where we are, right, Sue?
Yeah, as far as I know, yes.
Yeah, I'm reading it, I would say I agree with you, I'm reading the letter now, and that's basically what they're saying.
Is the dates set in stone? That they've got an appointment?
As far as I know, I don't know how stony it is, but April twenty-first was the, and that wouldn't be the final meeting, that's what I understand, right, Kevin?
Yes, and that's, I haven't heard a change for the twenty-first, which would be Part One of this process.
Right.
So that's a Wednesday? What time? What time?
Uh, I don't see it on here.
I don't see it, I don't see it on here, Kevin, is this?
I think one of the earlier, see if I can find it.
I sent an email out to Sheldon to get, to confirm what was written today, I hadn't heard back from her yet, but we can certainly get the actual time, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a interactive call, correct, Sue?
Yeah, it's a Zoom call, yeah.
This letter today, I don't see the date anywhere, it just said that we had to respond by April fifteenth.
No, I know I've seen it in one of these emails, so.
I'm only reading the one we got today, I'll go back through it, but I'm trying to find that date. It keeps saying about April eighth was the letter that they received.
There are about seven thousand of these emails.
Yeah, I know.
Right now, it's set for the twenty-first, if that changes, certainly we'll let everybody know, and we'll get the specifics as to time, and.
Sorry, Kevin.
That's okay, go ahead.
I think somewhere they said that they had not said it yet. They would let us know closer to the time, I seem to remember that, so if I find it, I'll send it on to you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
I seem to agree with Sue, I can't, it's almost, that's what it sounds like, they're working on, they had to the fifteenth to actually get this letter, and they received it, and now they're responding to it, but it doesn't say that they'll actually have that here and then, but.
There is a discussion of April twenty-first, I know that, I just don't know the time, so.
Yeah, I know that too, I saw that specifically that was putting in, into the letter, that the twenty-first was definitely a date, but whether or not that's been confirmed, I did not see any providence to that.
Yeah. And according to the school board, it said, I mean, the State Board, State Board meets monthly on the third Wednesday of the month, the board generally needs at least two meetings and possibly more to hear from interested parties to discuss and determine its findings, render its decision, so this will be the first one, and there will be more presumably. Okay.
Okay, any further discussion, inquiry, concerns? Seeing none, thank you all for your comments, let's move on to website renewal, update, if any.
Yes, that would be me, we have a town, small town committee working on updating the website, and Russ Lazarak is the, our expert who is doing that. He's doing a great job, I think, and our, our plan is to have a finalized, pretty finalized version before the next meeting, and Russ will send out a link to the Select Board, so you can take a look at it a few days before and see what you think, see if you like it, see if you have questions, and if we approve it, it will be live, sort of hoping that it will be live by the May fifteenth town meeting, so. It's, we've really updated the navigation, or he has, let's put it that way, so, and we're trying to update all the forms and policies and the documents, contact information on the website, so that's a big part of it. Any questions? Okay, if you have any others, let me know, I can clue you in.
Thank you, Sue, thank you, Russ. Moving on, unfinished business, Collaborative Finance Processing Manual, update, if any.
We've had some discussions, but nothing formally written down. Paul is leaving again next week, so we're trying to get something done prior to him leaving, just so that we can keep it moving forward.
Kevin, I have a question.
Sure.
Were, were we gonna have a meeting of this finance committee with Chad, has that?
Yeah.
Yes, I've been trying to pull, pull Paul in to, to find out a date, Chad is, is pretty flexible, but Paul is extremely busy right now, so it might be when he gets back.
Okay, and he'll be gone for?
Two, two weeks.
Okay.
He was back on the fourth of May.
Okay. All right, if something can happen beforehand, then everyone, Sue, to your question, that was involved in the last meeting, will be invited to this meeting, so we can continue to, to move forward with that, and again, I want to thank everybody for all the hard work they've been putting in on that, and hopefully we get that meeting going sooner as opposed to later. Any additional questions, commentary, or concern? From anyone on the board or public? Very good, moving on, unfinished business, E, Town Land off Davidson Hill, update.
We have a lot of interest, I shouldn't say a lot of interest, we've had three parties of interest for the land, Larry is in a substantial court case right now, and we're waiting for him to free up to get the particulars on how we do this, is it an auction, is it a, just a plain bid? You've given us a, a minimum, and so I'm kind of waiting for him to, to let us know if it's, you know, a live Zoom auction, I honestly don't know, so we're, we're still playing that game.
Thank you, any commentary? Concerns?
I have a quick question, Kevin, so the land on Pine Banks Road, that's sold, that's done, we're shot of it?
It's in contract, we have, the closing is tentatively set for the twenty-third, which is next Friday, not this Friday, but next, so yes, it is under contract.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sue. Moving on to new business, Third Quarter Financials.
In your packet, you have the three Third Quarter Financials, of course, answer questions now, but I, typically, we table it to give you a chance to really look through them, but it's up to you, folks.
Just a quick question, Russell? On page two of thirteen, where it says miscellaneous revenue, we had budgeted for two thousand, we actually got twenty-two, what was that revenue from? You don't have to give me asks, I was just.
Yeah, no, I don't know, Craig, but I will find out. Typically, that's the clerks, but I don't, I, I know that their, their grant is in a different place. Yeah.
Usually miscellaneous is something that you really didn't count on, we just put something in case we get it, so if we didn't earmark it and we left it miscellaneous, must be something really odd that came in, that we didn't know where to put it, that's all.
Yep, I'll find out for you.
Thank you.
Take a couple of minutes, everybody, if anyone has any questions, especially this evening.
Is there? It's just, was a little confusing for me, because this is, the first page is income, and the expenses, they're not, are they separated?
The revenue, it goes from the first page to the, to the total revenue line, which is on the second page, about a third of the way down. When you see selectmen, that's our start of our expenditures.
Oh, okay. Okay, got it.
I have a question, Russ, so legal services, we've been supplying some legal services to the school district for the school issue. Have those come in, and, and where will those be allocated?
We're paying them out of the regular legal service line, and hopefully we get reimbursed for that, but we're paying it out of just the regular legal service line.
So this is the bottom of page two, we've spent about eighty percent then so far.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and, but we have more bills coming in, so.
Russ, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Page three, we go down, it's got fifteen thousand, we budgeted for financial training, I should know what that is, but I can't remember, and so far, we spent nothing. What, what was financial trading for fifteen thousand, you remember that?
Yes, we put it in there, Cynthia actually requested that we put it in there, and you guys did put it in there.
Oh, yeah.
We should have had, we should have had money out of there, Chad is, is of course, charging us when we have meetings, so we should have put that.
So this meeting coming up with Chad that you're gonna have with, with Paul, it would come out of that money right there?
Yes, and we've already had one meeting, so it should have had, it shouldn't have a zero on it.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Into that also.
Okay, thank you.
I think Nate has something he wants to say.
Nate?
Yeah, I, I forgot, you probably can't see us, Kevin, sorry, I had my hand raised.
I can see you.
Oh, you can? So my question is, page one of thirteen, revenue from state? Second line down, we got pavement reimbursement of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, Hartley Hill Grant twenty-five, Forest Road Grant of eighty, but we've received almost double what we budgeted in revenue.
That's a little misleading, the one sixty-five has got to go back into the pavement fund, the treatment fund, because that's where we paid it out of, so that is really not going to be there as in that line, again, Paul's been busy, so we haven't been able to tackle him to get that moved. Hartley Hill Road Grant was our grants and aid monies that we spent one year, and you have to actually pay for it, then you get the money back, so that's where that is, and the Forest Road was actually a combination of two years, and that number is incorrect also, it's supposed to be forty thousand, not eighty thousand. It's two, two twenties, we got one on last year's and one on this year's. I'm not sure why that doubled since the last time.
So the, the one sixty-five received from pavement reimbursement, that's from the state?
That's from our Class Two Grant that, that we did for back Westminster Road.
Okay. And then we had a hundred, we budgeted, we have a hundred and forty-five thousand or something in the budget for, in, in our own budget for paving?
One twenty-five, we're, yeah.
We're doing almost three hundred thousand dollars worth of paving this year, was that was what you're saying?
We are doing no more pavement in this fiscal year, next year, we have planned to do in front of the Westminster West School up the hill, and we've got to reclaim it eight to ten inches deep, that road is implorable shape, so we're, we're planning on a, on a two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar project there. With guardrails, we'll make it more.
Hey, can I, this is Cynthia, can I chime in, I'm hiding?
Hi Cynthia, hi Cynthia.
Russ, if you need help with moving those monies and not wait for Paul, just call Darlene, she'll help you with it.
Okay, I had her on the phone today, and I, I thought Paul was going to be in today to take care of it, but I definitely will.
He's gonna be gone for a couple weeks, and this is, and it needs to be done, just make sure you just, she'll do it for you, she'll help you with it.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you.
Nate, Nate, you got any questions?
No, not now, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I'll put it on the next agenda, just give you guys some time.
Thank you, Russell. Seeing no further discussion? Moving on to new business, Section B, Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, Select Board Representatives.
Every, every five years, we update our local hazardous mitigation plan, and it is a cast of characters from the town, they like to see as many representatives of different facets of town, so I'm just reading through the list, myself, of course, Cole Streeter, John Parker, both from the Fire Department, Dan Green, possibly from the Prudential Committee, Jim Mattel from the Institute, he's our Shelter Manager, Chuck Lawrence, of course, the Road Foreman, Kelly Thayer, the Financial Manager, Pauline Blake O'Brien, which is our Town Clerk, Kevin, you are a part of it through osmosis being the Select Board Chair, but I do need one more member from the Select Board, we have the, the Planning Commission Chair, and we'll need another one from the Planning Commission to, to be in there, I have Adam Halleck from the Westminster School, also representing the Station Market area, Westminster Center School Principal will be involved, I'll have Steve Harrison from Kernhampton Homes, someone from the Compass School, Donna Dawson from Westminster Cares, also representing the South, Nancy Delzell from the Historic Village, Ruth Grandy, Historic Society Chair in Central, Chris Hackett, hopefully from the Kernhampton Board, but also representing the South, John Jones from the North, and I'm looking for a couple from West West, Central, Station, North and South representatives still.
I'll do it from the West.
You want to be a, the Select Board?
Sure, sure.
Representing, perfect, thank you, Toby.
Thank you, Toby. Got everybody, Russ?
Whoops, sorry.
Okay, good.
To continue, we have our two sources of food, quick food, bulk food, Stacy and, and Tim Allen, and Paul Harlow from Harlow Farms, if families get displaced, et cetera, then we need to, to react quickly, and they, they always want a food source, they want the Fire Departments and the I C S trained folks to be ready to go, so, anyway, we have a really good start on it, and with the, with the volunteers, it's not a large commitment, it's a couple meetings right off the bat, and then they do their thing with it, which is Wyndham Regional, and then we all tackle it back with another meeting or two to put the final touches on it, it does last about a year, the public will be asked to participate in public hearings, I think there's at least two. The public will be asked to participate in public hearings. I think there's at least two, if not three. And I came in at the very end of, of it last time, and it seemed to be very, very well organized, and it is a very substantial plan for hazardous mitigation. So, anyway, thank you for filling that spot, Toby.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, executive session has been tabled. Moving on to new business, liquor license requests, Harlow's Last Stand.
So it's pretty self-explanatory, it's, it's just a renewal. I'm not sure why Pauline thought it was necessary, but she put an attachment that said, elected March second, twenty-twenty-one, Paul Harlow, Town Treasurer and Treasurer of the Wyndham Northeast Elementary School District. So it's attached to that, and I think that's gonna go to the state as well. But I do need a motion to accept that if you so choose.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Jason?
Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor?
I abstain.
And with one exception. Liquor license is passed. Managers' report.
So before we get started, Susan, you come in and see me and sign that?
Oh, yes.
The clerk?
Yeah. Right.
Thank you. Just a few things, we are receiving damage to our town forest. So I, I met with Tim Morton and went for a lengthy walk. And East Putney Brook Road is not where they're accessing it from. They're coming in from the backside, and they're damaging our, our baby growth that we have coming up, that will create the forest into its proper stage. And so I have, if you give me a second.
How do they get to the backside from another way? Where is that?
Through private lands, but there is trails. I don't know if everybody can see this.
Yeah.
These are the signs that we're going to be putting up, except they're gonna say Westminster, Vermont lands, and it's gonna say the exact same thing. Is it backwards to you guys?
No.
No.
Oh, good.
No.
And so it just states the statute, and they're plastic, they're, they're really durable plastic. Yeah, anyway, so it was Tim's recommendation to do this, and the fishing game will be monitoring it to keep those folks out of the town forest. I should say, I'm also working with the town of Putney on this.
Terrific, thank you.
Can I jump in, Kevin?
Absolutely.
Has anything been done about the, kind of the junk that was on the side of that road down through there? Last time I was there in the fall, there was some old vehicles, and I know it's Class Four at that point, but I didn't know.
The owner of those junk vehicles is selling that parcel, and so they should be removed. They did clean up the mess on the town, in the town forest from the school bus, which was very appreciative. So we've been pressing them to the point of when the sale goes, that all that stuff has got to go.
Good.
It's not in, in, it is in the town, of course, right away, but it is not hindering traffic, so.
Right.
We've been kind of treading on, treading lightly, trying to get it so that they're, they will move it when it's time.
Sure enough.
So, delinquent tax update, we've done extremely well. Since we started in February, we've collected three-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents of delinquent taxes. But that being said, we still have eighteen properties that have been notified three times and have not called or requested any type of help. So, according to our schedule, we are going to send it out tomorrow to legal counsel for the first letter to go out. And in tendencies of past years, his letter carries a lot more weight than mine. So they will, from that eighteen, will drop significantly. We know of four properties that will go to tax sale, they have walked away, they do not want them any longer. So anyway, that's the schedule. Questions or anything? Okay. We, as everybody got, or is getting, a blue card in the mail. I wish I had one in front of me, I should have. It's for an event, it's called a mapping, Community Mapping Event. And it's for the Planning Commission to create our town plan. It is happening on April twenty-sixth from six to eight with the State of Vermont's Mapping Coordinator, Jen's Hilke. And like I said, you should be receiving, I received mine this, today. Actually, it was last night, so yesterday, in the mail, and it's a blue card, it's about yay big, it's a postcard. And it has the event listed on it, and if you're interested, please tune in, it's gonna be an interesting.
Sure.
That's correct, that's what it is right there. And the last thing. We are in the process of working out the health order that we issued on our road, on the Lions property. Today, the road crew in Tyvek suits and gloves and masks cleaned up the paint cans and all the stuff that, that was loose. And Friday, the fire department is going to burn the remnants of the inhabitants, and then we'll pick up what's remaining and put it in the dumpster and have that site cleaned up by the weekend.
Do we actually own that property, the town?
We do not. What we're going to do is get reimbursed for our expenses and the back taxes from the estate that is there. Which is substantial, it will cover our our out-of-pocket. Anything else? Okay, that's it for my manager's report.
Thank you very much, Russell. Boards and Commissions.
We now have an immediate opening for two Wyndham Regional, excuse me, yeah, Wyndham Regional Commissions Representatives. Bobby Kilburn, who has been doing it for quite a few years, had to step down for personal reasons. And she was going to hold the fort until she knew she was gonna have to get done. But it happened quicker than, than she was hoping. So now we have no representative to that commission, and we definitely have to have at least one, if not two, as they recommend. So if you know of anybody that would be interested, the commitment is not too stringent, but there is commitment. There's, it's a monthly meeting, and then there's subcommittee meetings that could possibly, if you're interested, participate in. So if you know of anybody, please send them my way. It will be in the Gazette until we can find two people.
Russ, can I ask you a question? I thought I was appointed as an alternate, and I keep getting stuff, but I'm unsure of what I'm doing. So I just got another email from Windham Regional Commission for a meeting on April nineteenth, so I thought I was elected as an alternative or alternate, whatever the word is.
Yeah.
Is that, am I in the right one?
Yeah, it's the, it's the WRC. It's a, it's a Zoom meeting.
Yeah, they, I have the connection, everything is for twelve PM on April nineteenth.
What time?
It's twelve PM. What is twelve PM?
Noon.
Yeah, noon. April nineteenth at twelve PM, with the Zoom and the connection to it. They gave it to me, so I'm assuming they know I'm on the committee now.
Okay, well, I know, I know they don't hit the, the alternate until we have no representative, so.
So am I supposed to be with that or not be with that?
Please be with that.
Okay.
Go to that meeting. Thank you.
Okay. But yeah, I'm only for filling, we still need to pursue getting two people.
Absolutely.
But I'll at least go to it and then give you an update at the next meeting.
Craig, if you think you could forward it to me, I will also participate if I can.
I just got it today.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, Boards and Commissions.
I have nothing else.
Okay, other business?
Well, Kevin, you and I were talking about a specific structure in town that's dangerous, and so you asked me to bring back the list of unsafe, unkept properties. I was going to, to clean it up and get rid of my, my marks, but I thought it was kind of important to have the progress that we've made so far with some of these properties. Such as our road, the plastic house that is being cleaned up as we speak, as I just told you. And a couple of the others, there's no need of, of reading names out loud. But anyway, so we still have quite a few more, and they are not getting any better. Especially the top two. We have a lot of concern in the village about these.
And I appreciate your time and our conversation, just amplify that a little, I'm also keeping anonymity, anonymity because it's appropriate. You know, that's been coming up in the town, and it's important that we do keep the public aware that you are working on it, and you're doing what's necessary that's legal and ethical to try and make sure that these properties carry as least amount of risk to people walking the dog or whatever it is. And other things that can occur in a abandoned property. So I appreciate all the work you guys are doing, and it's important that we keep that in front of the committee, in front of the board, and in front of everyone to let them know that you, you know, even though they're still there and some of this blight persists, that everything's being done to try and rectify it. So I really appreciate us having that conversation, and thank you for everything you're doing.
Kevin, I have a question.
Sure.
So Russ, you have obviously contacted the landowners several times.
On each one of these properties, they've been notified that there's a hazard, and we thought we had a couple of them cleaned up, they went to tax sale, and we were like, you know, great, the new owner will take care of them, clean them up. And they got bailed out at the very end of the tax sale process, went back to the original owners with no progress in cleaning up. So, anyway, unfortunate, but they all know about them, yes.
Nate? Nate has a question.
Who's determining the unsafeness or unkeptness of these properties?
Typically, I get it from the neighbors. So that they are seeing negative activity there, or they have you know, keeping track of the roof and, and the drip line and, and all that, the sagging or their whatever. I have been into at least three-quarters of those, and rightly so, they're on that list.
I, I, I get that, but I don't know, and I won't say any names either, like you guys aren't, but the barns in the lower portion of this list, why is, why are those barns in any worse shape than probably a dozen other barns I can show you in town? That's what I'm saying, is how are we identifying and picking on these particular parcels over someone else's opinion of unkept?
It's by complaints. Honestly, that's how I'm getting these. I'm not seeking them out, if that's what you're asking. These are given to me by the public, and it's not just one person typically. When a whole neighborhood says, wow, this is really something that we need to look at, then I put them on this list.
I, yeah.
Do we have this, do I have this list? Where, where did you see the list, Nate?
Toby, I sent it to you separately, I think. It was in a separate email.
Okay, I haven't seen it yet.
In your packet, maybe?
It's not in my packet.
I sent it at least two days ago. Kevin, when were we talking, Friday?
Yeah, with Friday, and I appreciate especially what Nate had to say.
So I sent it to you on Friday, separate from the packet.
I didn't get it.
Also following up on what Nate had to say, just so we make sure it's clear to everybody, no one is trying to be intrusive or in any way do something that's not you know, within the bounds of the, the law or be selective. It's just simply responding to members of the community who find certain things to be either a danger or feel a danger, and we have seen that throughout our town, which is pretty large, and it might not be where it's seen, where certainly somebody can enter a dwelling that's, or a partial dwelling that's been unoccupied or not been looked at, and certain things can happen there, but no one is trying to, you know, basically say, because we don't have the authority, you know, that it's not your property, or we're gonna tell you what to do with your property, it's just simply as if you know, something is overtly concerning to people who make a complaint, we're gonna respond to it and say that we have. I hope that addresses it.
Yeah, I mean, I just, so, were we asked by the property owner to have our employees clean up that our road property?
We had to do an emergency health order there. I had to declare it a contaminated site. I don't know what you know about the site, but it was awful, and between the fire chief and myself, we went, we tried to address it, what we could do and what we couldn't do. And with help from the state fire marshal, we had declared that this was an emergency health order.
Could you send me that, send it to me again?
The list, yes.
Yeah.
Russ, so I'm assuming that's sort of a separate was a much worse situation than the other ones on this list?
Oh, no question, that there was, there was a death there, and it was, it was not okay to leave, as it is.
I guess my last point I would just say is moving forward, if we determine that there's another substantial risk, then we want to venture down that path again. I don't think I would use our own road crew to do that, they could be doing other work, and if we're gonna get reimbursed, why are we, why wouldn't we hire a professional hazmat cleanup team? But that's for future discussions, if we venture into some level of, I'm gonna be rude about this, but imminent no domain type actions to clean up somebody's property on our own accord. But that's just my opinion.
Duly noted, and a good opinion, and makes a lot of sense. And certainly, we will make sure that that is what we do in the next time this, this does occur. Thank you, as always, for that input. Thank you as always for that, uh, input. Um, okay. Uh, anything else? Any other questions, concerns? Comments?
Um, I, I'm just gonna, well, I have two things. One is that, uh, how are we doing with the sheriffs? Um, we talked about Westminster West speeding through the town and you were going to do something about that. Or at least, are, are we getting any response from the sheriff's office?
Absolutely. Yep. They, they've spent, yes.
Okay.
They have spent quite a, quite a few hours, um, on the West West Road, especially in the village.
Okay. I hope so, because I haven't seen them there. Uh, and one other thing is I'll do the, I'll, um, I'll sign up for the Wyndham Regional Commission.
Thank you, Toby.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So Craig, forward the, uh.
Yeah, I got a new, I, I'll try to do it tomorrow. I got a new computer. They, uh, foolishly installed something today and nothing worked. So tomorrow when I, when I get them, I'll get them and I'll forward to Toby and, and you. Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Okay.
Any other comments?
I, yeah, thank. Uh, I was just wondering, I know you talked about it at a previous meeting, the cemetery wall. If we had a plan for that, it just gets worse. It seems like every time you drive by it. Um, and, uh, Forest Road, I'm wondering what the status of that was, if it was completed. Looks like it needs the, um, asphalt ditch and there was some erosion. I just happened to go that way home and, uh, there was some erosion down over the bank there from the, um, sediment pond. So uh, just curious where we are at with either one of those.
It's, it's really early to do asphalt, so, um, I, I haven't been in touch with him. Um, but they know that it's to be checked this spring for, uh, reseeding, um, mulching and any erosion uh, correction with the asphalt. So we haven't done that yet. It just, you know, just barely dried out enough so that you could travel it without making more damage than good. So yes. Um, what was the other one you asked about?
Uh, the cemetery wall, the stone wall.
We have a, do we have a plan? We have, um, a price from three different, um, uh, stone types, I guess you'd say, the concrete stone types from, from Carroll Concrete. And, um, the board picked the one that they liked. Um, we opted not to do it that year. Um, so it is on hold, but, but we know it's, like you said, it's, it's only getting worse and, um, Chuck keeps picking up the remnants so that nobody else does, so that we ha- we'd have them in our, um, in the town. So, but yes, we're, we know we're keeping an eye on it. It's getting, um, it's not getting any better. Let's go there.
Thank you.
I just have that, um, did, when we talked about it, it wasn't just fixing the wall. We, we were going to have to do something with the bank too, to keep it, or was this just to fix the wall?
The wall is going to be taller so that it makes it a less of a slope, so that more, um, maintenance can be done easily.
Uh huh. But it's not going to have to be removing any of that slope. We talked about maybe those trees would have to come down. It was a whole big.
Well, when you put in that size wall, you're, you are going to take it back a little bit further than it is now. But what you see is, um, only just the face. That wall is really thick. Um, I, I actually watched him create that and there's drainage behind it. So that, what you see, you think is only this wide is, is literally probably four or five feet wide at the base. So yes, we will definitely be disturbing a lot more than what it shows there. And we're going to try to set it back just a smidge also.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other commenter? Concerns, questions?
Kevin, we're going to discuss maybe, you know, where we're going as far as these Zoom meetings. I mean, it is getting, days are getting longer and it's getting warmer out.
Yeah.
Is there a possibility that we maybe go back to the fire station or whatever, or what, you know? What's our plan?
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up, Greg. Uh, Russ, uh, any guidance from the state yet on that?
They, they're recognizing outdoor meetings. All of the colleges now are going to have, um, some sort of graduation. Um, the ones that are being really, really safe are outside. The ones that are, are, um, need to be inside are spacing still with, um, with the masks, et cetera, but, um, he has re- released a lot. So if, if we had a, um, the inkling to, to start meeting in person, then we would use, I would have to ask, but we would move, use the, the fire station, uh, bay so that we have open air again.
Did you just have a meeting there with a development review board?
We did.
Yep, yep. And they, was no problem. People came.
People came, but most of them were family. So it really didn't, um, it wasn't like there was several different groups. It was just one group and then, um, the other application. So um, it, it wasn't, it didn't, it didn't work out to be a problem.
I'd be in favor of the fire department as soon as we could.
I, I would as well.
Toby?
Yes.
Uh, I too would, uh, be open to, um, getting back into, um, in-person meetings. Craig?
Yeah. I was just trying to think the next one would be the, what's the last week in April?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
I would think we're, and then the following time we're getting real close to where we're going to have a regular town meeting. So I don't know why we wouldn't want to try it at, at the next meeting.
I'm not crazy about the, the, uh, uh, unless we're doing the, well, yeah, we wouldn't be in the, um, fire department where the trucks are.
We can, or I don't know why we couldn't be in the other room and we would still have Zoom. We could still have Zoom. So people that want to Zoom, you still, you'd have a choice. You know?
Well, I'd rather not be in the, where the trucks are. It's noisy and it's not, it's not a good.
I don't know. Russ, maybe check that. I don't know why we couldn't have it in the room and just leave the door open. Would, would that qualify for an open meeting?
If you're going to go inside, then I'll, there's plenty of room for thirty pe- people easily.
Right.
And space them out. So if you're going to go inside with, with the, um, Zoom, um, capability, uh, you should be fine. Um, again, tables spread out, chairs spread out. Um, just ask when, when a couple comes in, they can sit together. Just grab a new chair and sit and keep the spacing and it, it worked out very well the other night.
I, I, I think that's, yeah, I like to see that. I like to see us try. We don't, we never get more than ten or fifteen people unless we really did something wrong and then we stir up the nest and get a lot of people, but it's been a long time. So uh, I think that's, that's, I don't know. I just think it's a lot more comfortable. Even when they're filming it, they're, they all see us. We're all in room and they recognize us and everything. So, and then as long as we're still making Zoom available, so the people that don't want to come still can just see it the same.
It's easy. The fire department, but, um, is that, it's for the next meeting or, or you're just going to stay where you are for the twenty-eighth and do it on May twelve?
Uh, uh, I guess it doesn't, I'm not strongly, but I would think if we're going to have in that room, I would say by the twenty-eighth of April, why not try it?
I agree.
Okay.
Everyone on board with the twenty-eighth, um, at Firehouse?
Yes.
Yep.
Provided we have also Zoom enabled for everyone.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
All right. You'll let everyone know. Date of the next meeting is April twenty-eighth and Russ will confirm the venue. I'll take a, if there's nothing further, I'll take a motion. Please, we'll take a motion. Go ahead, Nate.
I'm sorry. I, I, I missed this opportunity and I just a quick question. The, the plan for the cemetery wall is that the road crew is going to do that work?
It's not set in stone, but yes, we had talked about it. Um, doing it in sections, getting the materials, setting them all at the town garage, doing it as they can free up, um, men. Um, but yeah, uh, it was talked about, but nothing was set in stone.
Seems like a major project, but I don't know dirt, I guess.
It honestly, those stones, uh, those blocks go together pretty, pretty nicely.
It would take you longer to prep it than it would to actually do the wall.
Exactly.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, you just referred to the wall being four feet thick. So you got to dig all the way down to the base of that wall. Drainage, all that backfill. I, I just didn't know we had the capabilities of, with the equipment we had. So, but either way, I guess it doesn't matter as long as it gets fixed.
I think if they start and they find you doing it overhead, I'd just regroup, start over again, you know? They won't know till they get in there and get started, I think. We'll see.
You, you could do the section from the vault south. This is the shortest section. See how it went and read, wait, at that point.
Terrific. Any other comments?
I move. We adjourn.
I second.
Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be safe, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.